Okay, I'd like to call the meeting in order with some flag please. The flag is leading.
The flag. United States of America. We are honored to experience one nation under God, the invisible, who will do it in justice for all.
Okay, before we get started this evening, we have some guests here from the VFW. Mr. Stewart is here.
Commander of the American Legion.
Commander of the American Legion, last name, sorry, I didn't get it?
Powell.
Uh, Powell?
Yes.
Powell, Mr. Powell. Okay, I'd like to invite you up to the podium to express your interest.
The reason I came over tonight to say a few words is to say thank you. Through the years, you have supported us and helped us with our organization, and the veterans there. The VFW on the 28th of July voted to close the post. And the reason for closing the post is, we have to fill out a piece of paper like everybody fills out, and you have to have 12 people being officers associated with the VFW. We could not muster up 12 people. As a result of that, we are in trouble. But we had a few meetings, and the last meeting on the 28th of June, the members voted to close the post. At that point in time, all our assets were frozen, and we just notified today that there are trustees that come down to take what they want, particularly the monies. And, but I just want to be sure that you know that we really appreciate it all the years. But before I get off, I just wanted to say, the VFW was formed in 1936, and that's quite a bit of time after World War I. I would've thought it would happen before that, but May 28th is the call for it. Our post was formed in 1983, and through these years, we've been doing various things. One of the things that we do, very important to us, is the funeral, that the families request a military funeral, which included the rifles, the folder, the flag, and a funeral, and the American flag present. And we also place a shield that holds the flag flying at the stone for the rest of the period of time that we can. And then each Memorial Day, there's a flag that gets placed there. And we, the VFW, had this particular town, the town of Livingston, and... I'm missing one.
Germantown.
Gallatin, what did I miss?
Germantown.
Clamont! And we would go around and put the flags on each grave, which each veteran was identified somehow, and his graves like. Through the years, we've supported the VA functions at the VA. We were also sponsored by Cub Scouts, and in Germantown, I can beat this up. We also had parade days, memorial days, veterans' days, 11/11. And the problem we had was that we could not get people to come down. Oh, which people are these? These are people that are returning presently from war zones that we all hear about in the news every day. They are younger, they're much older, they don't want to really belong to grandpa's post. So they're forming their own organizations, or Iraq-Afghanistan organizations, as did many other groups through the years. And at one time, I think there were 19 different veterans' organizations in the state of New York. As a result, they're all dwindling down, and the other ones are now having different agendas for the younger people than what we have. Although they are comrades in arms, they are younger, and as I said, that's where we had a problem. We tried to get them to join, we bought them memberships, and they sort of, as the term goes, walk through the front door and out the back door. They weren't interested in being a member of our post. As a result, we got older, our post members are in their 80s, and in their 90s, and just recently, we lost two. Quinn Moore, you may know, who was our chaplain, and the adjutant, who also dropped dead. So, again, we're closing, but the responsibilities that we have of flags, and funerals, and so forth, and so on, the American Legion has said, "We'll take over for you." So that would be the contact if you have any questions about any of your veterans' events that are going to happen on neighborship, we'd let you know that anyhow. So with that closing, I'd like to introduce you to the American Legion commander, who would like to say just a few words, and then you won't bother you anymore with our comments, okay? Thank you very much, this is commander of the American Legion, and his name is?
Stan Powell.
Stan Powell. Yeah?
Thank you. We took over this year, placed the flags on the cemeteries for the VFW already, we did that for Memorial Day. There's four grave yards that we did, and we will keep doing them. We have 89 members in the American Legion right now, we're pretty good, but like the VFW, most of them are getting up in age too. We could lose men or not a year, you know. I like those. But we will support you in anything you need to do. If anybody needs a flag, if they bring it down to the cemetery, they can call me. I don't know if you gave me my card or whatever, but I'll get it to you before I leave. I'll come out, I just live down the road from here, and I'll take care of the graves. My email's there, anybody can email me, ask me questions, anything they want. I'm here for the support of the community. The members and the servicemen who have died, we will do the funerals for them with the weapons, and donate the flag to your families, whoever's left. Any questions?
No, I just would like to take this opportunity to thank, thank you for taking over, thank you for everything you have done in the past, obviously. If you do have the contact information, I'll be happy to leave with us. Comments or questions, we'll let some agree.
Thank you very much. Mary Ellen Stevens. Hot looks, if you need. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Enjoy your night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Moving on, let's move on to approval of the entire town, 40 minutes, probably 40 minutes. Anybody have any questions, suggestions? Second, all in favor? Okay. Communications board, Mary.
Town clerk's report for July 2012. Zoning board for special permit fee $100, community house lease deferred for $1,000. Dog licensing $32.50. Certificates of occupancy $50. Town clerk fees for vital statistics $100, for community house donation $100, and foil requests $38.15. Total check for the general fund $1,441. Paid to New York State Department of Ag and Markets for dog surcharges $21, so the total for the month was $1,462.
For mail, we have this email came to us from Stephen Hammer. Dear Supervisor Stats of Claremont Town Board, I am ready to redesign the position of Town Webmaster effective at your convenience. After redesigning the site and maintaining it for five years, I have been thinking about passing this job on to somebody else for a while. And now that an IT professional, Evan Hempel, has joined the board and expressed a willingness to take over, this seems a good time. Please let me know how I can assist with the transition. I have enjoyed surveying the town in this capacity and look forward to finding other ways to be involved in town affairs. With all best wishes, Stephen.
Take this opportunity to thank Mr. Hammer for everything he's done for us over the years. It's quite the undertaking to get that done, website established and up and running, so he did quite a good job for us in that part. And obviously, this board is very familiar and capable of handling this, I believe, if you're slow to handle it as well.
Yes.
And everything is okay for you to take over?
Yeah.
Good, excellent. Thank you, Stephen.
It was great working with you. Emailed him with the problem, and I got an email back.
And he came one night and sat down and explained the subject.
So it was good. Okay, then I got, saw this in the paper, for anyone maybe that doesn't get the paper, I did put it on the website. DEC and the governor, actually, the governor, on July 13th issued a burn ban until October 10th because of the drought situation. This will, this is for burning, burning your brush, so none of that.
Leaving the outdoor burning as well.
Yeah, outdoor. Yeah, I can, I can, I gotta be careful, but it's a little better maybe than it was there in the dry, but still. So just so people are aware of that. And Columbia County Department of Public Works from the solid waste division, they have a new list of acceptable recyclable materials. So we're set on the board, and also they have a brush program. At the Greenport Transfer Station, they are now charging $25 per ton for disposal of the material, or a $2 minimum for non-wayable waste. And they give the dimensions of all that, so I will post that also.
Just to, just to update people on that, the brush charge on that is a new charge that the county has put in place because for many years, I don't think there's ever been a charge for brush, and what's happened is, anybody's allowed to take their brush to the Greenport site, dump it, but the charge for the chicken has been coming up and up and up, astronomical. I mean, we pay $20,000 each time we have a chipper come in there, we usually do it twice a year, I believe. So you're talking $40,000 loss a year that the county taxpayers are paying, the chip brush that goes to Greenport. Well, every day right now, the people from Gallatin, the people from New Lebanon, the people from Claremont probably are taking their brush up to Greenport. It's the local, you know, the local landscapers, contractors, tree guys up there, they're using the service for free, that we're all paying the chip. So we put this in place, we don't like to increase, or start new charges, or new, we increase the charges, but this is something we're going to put in place this year to help offset that charge to the county, which is supposed to actually support the whole entire brush grinding. So whoever dumps there pays a fee, and, you know, we're going to try to set up the design, pay the entire grinding fee. So that way, it takes that off the taxpayers, so I just wanted to put a little bit of background information on that. Thank you.
All right, then I just have to, you know, say something. On Thursday, September 13th, right now, there is scheduled to be a state and local primary. This is a Thursday, usually we vote on Tuesdays. It'll be held from 12 to 9 here, if you vote in Claremont. So we have talked to several of the, our offices are usually open here on Thursday, and we've talked to the judges, John Pizer himself involved, and we believe we're probably going to just close, would be the best thing, the assessor wouldn't be here. So they tell me it's mandatory, and that's if we're having a primary in this district, and they're going to let me know for sure. But I will be posting it on the website, please watch that, and I will be putting a notice in the paper that we will all no longer, not be here that night if there is a primary to be held. It'll be from 12:00 PM to 9:00 AM. Please go out and register also, get your registration, and if you haven't. Dear management, don't permits are going to go on sale Monday, August 13th. If anyone wants me to meet them here on Monday night, that's next Monday, I will be glad to do so. Say from 6 to 8 o'clock, or if they just want to come in on my normal night, Thursday, we'll be selling them. Okay, get your don't permit. That's all I got.
Just a quick though on the primaries as well, just pull up the comments tonight, but we just were notified the board of lectures will come to the next meeting due to the, what, this is going to be five primaries? They're expecting five primaries this year? They're going to need another $50,000 to cover these additional primaries that weren't budgeted. So they will be coming to the next meeting, I believe, to present an increase in their budget, $50,000 to cover these other primaries. I don't know, you know, what can be done to prevent this, I don't think anything, but in these primaries, we have a lot of money. Obviously, it's passed down, and we're on the shore end of the stick, I mean, we have to pay for this. And I don't know how that can be stopped, but as long as everybody knows, it's certainly costing us money for every primary as well.
Was that the second Thursday, right? Is that my application right?
Well, it's a week. Yeah, and I'll just have to let you know when I find out for sure that it is definite, I believe it's going to be.
Application right, then also.
Push it to the next week.
Okay.
Why Thursday?
What, what is the next door in the other building, if you want?
What?
If you want to do it in the other building, you can do that.
Yeah, probably, but, you know.
Yeah, it's up to you, Charlie.
All right, it's over.
That's all I have.
Okay. Correspondence to the web committee, if you have anything for the web committee, suggestions, comments? Evan, you want to just say something real quick about the meetings?
Okay, I was going to do that later, but I'll do it now. Fred has been recording, and we have DVD's available in the clerk's office, and also put online, or not online, on the cable TV. But recently, he's offered to put them on YouTube, and I've looked at a couple of them, they look very good, so I'm going to be investigating how to best put them on the website, if I can stick them in with the same post that the meeting minutes go out on, or possibly just in the news feed, you have to figure that out. But it looks very good and very promising, so people will be able to see them at their own convenience. If you need to go to sleep and you can't get to sleep, you'll have an option now. So thank you very much for that surprise.
All right, excellent, thank you Fred, thank you for working on this, that'd be great, I think that's been a request before, and we haven't had the capability to do it yet, but between you two, we'll figure it out. Okay, before we get into committee reports, we have our attorney here, Mr. Howard, thank you for joining us tonight. We brought down this evening for, to finish up, to finalize the paperwork on taking over and dedicating the road, Reagan's Way to the town. We finally have that completed, and I'm just going to have Andy just give a quick synopsis and bring it up right up to speed on where we are, what's going on here.
Yeah, over the last several months...
Can you just step up so the camera can get you?
Well, I'm trying to avoid the camera.
Thank you.
Actually, over the last several months, there's been a cooperative effort between Mr. Moran, Morris Associates, the town engineer, the property owners along Reagan's Way, their council, Mr. Moran's council, and town of Claremont, to go ahead and basically improve that roadway to a point where it's safe for travel, safe in the wintertime for plowing, and also, long-term, the town, with Mr. Moran's help and the property owners along Reagan's Way, secured drainage easements and easements to allow for the future maintenance of the road, so that what you see out there right now, presently, will stay that way. And when I say what you'll see out there right now, within the last couple of weeks, the paving's been completed, the roadway is in a really good state right now, and will be for the foreseeable future. What we're doing here this evening is basically finishing the process whereby Mr. Moran has made a formal application based upon sign-off by the town engineer, having been received by the town board, for the town board to formally accept the roadway. Upon acceptance of the roadway, the order is issued by the highway superintendent to basically place it on the town's highway inventory. And going forward, you know, the town will plow and maintain the roadway as it does other roadways. So really, what we have tonight is, we have on filing the application from Mr. Moran, there is basically an order, or a consent, excuse me, by the town board to accept this highway that's similar to a resolution that we consider, and then with that, the highway superintendent's order to say, "Go ahead and put this on the inventory," will be issued. But the town engineer has looked at the road, he's done inspections all the way along the process, I spoke with him today, Major Kowski, and he advised that, you know, it was a really tough-notch job, and it's in a position now for the town board to take it.
Excellent, all right. We do have the question board here, I'm just asking Mary if she would just read that.
In the matter of laying out a certain town highway in the town of Claremont County, Columbia State of New York, consent of town board to proposed town highway. Upon reading and filing the application of John Moran dated and acknowledged on August 6, 2012, dedicating and releasing the necessary lands for a proposed town highway, as shown on a certain map entitled Reagan's Way, as shown on a certain map entitled, quote, Lands of John B. Teeter, unquote, Town of Claremont, Columbia County, New York, and filed in the Columbia County Clerk's Office as map number 5336 on March 4, 1975, and more commonly known on a property survey prepared for Smith-Pakay Properties Corporation by Marie T. Welch, and dated April 22, 2002, filed in the Columbia County Clerk's Office on May 10, 2002, as map number O2-108, such street known and designated as and by the name Reagan's Way. Resolved in accordance with the provisions of Section 171 of the Highway Law of the State of New York, Consent B, and the same hereby is given, that the Superintendent of Highways of the Town of Claremont make an order laying out the aforesaid town highway. The said town highway consists of the lands described in the said dedication and released and to extend is delineated upon the aforesaid map. Upon questioning, the following board member will be in favor or not.
Okay, so we have the association course to accept the road, there are questions to discuss on this one. Let's take a vote. Anybody want to make a motion to accept?
Please.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Excellent.
I'd just like to take this time to thank everybody involved with this, I know Mr. Moran has worked hard to handle this, to get it taken care of finally, easements, the property owners, took a while, town attorney, an engineer, I know Jimmy's been out there a few times, everybody involved with this, but it's finally, finally got buttoned up, and I appreciate everybody's efforts to get this taken care of, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I don't think, unless anybody allows something, anything else for Andy, I don't think we need to keep him around. Is anything on the board for town attorney? Any questions? Anybody in the public have any for the town attorney that you have to question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it doesn't have to do with Reagan's Way, but as long as you're here, save me a trip. Has there been any progress at all on the school tax problem?
There, there has been some progress, I've been, I've been looking at it, doing some legal research. One of the issues that's come up has been some of the changes in those particular provisions which deal with it, which is, has raised some ambiguity in my mind, on how far the town and county could go. So we, we are still looking at that, and I hope to have an answer for you.
It's more the county than town, I'm a big eraser if you need it.
Right, oh, I know, I know. It's funny though, you picked a statute that's gone through a lot of revisions, you know.
I never do anything easy.
Just so everybody knows what this is about, it's about breaking down the school tax and the property tax. School tax means it will hold up.
School tax, property tax can be broken down.
Two payments, I believe, or quarterly payments, I don't know what we're looking at, but I know it's definitely breaking it down, so that one mustn't do. It's been talked about for years, I know Julie's brought this up at the county a few times. It's been kicked around, it's been dismissed, and now it's being relooked at again, so, but that's just to fill everybody in what that's about. Okay. Well, before you leave, I would just like to take this last second to personally thank you, and I'm sure the board will also join me thanking you for the donation of the basketball hoop and stand and backboard. It was very generous for your company, you and Mr. Freeman, Freeman Howard donated our basketball hoop to the court, and I just wanted to make sure and thank the person for that again.
He's the actual basketball coach.
He's the basketball coach? Look, I can't write the check.
This is what he is very happy because he loves youth basketball.
It has been youth, I've seen people out there several times already, so, but yeah, it's, we really certainly appreciate it. You know, it's, we again appreciate it, thank you very much. I think that's it, thanks for coming down. Okay, let's move on to committee reports.
We had a meeting the other day about the placards. I haven't really looked at that, I'm just going to hang these.
Yeah, that just came, I guess, it just came on.
Well, if it will, next month, I'll have an answer, I guess.
You know, the basketball court, there's lots of people across the street, and they have seen people out there using the numerous cages. And I'm sure some people get to play with it, or they use it. The new truck is in, had a couple problems with it, but they've been fixed, and Jimson's pretty happy with it. Lettering has been done, looks good. Lettering's done, I picked up the ball, and then all looks good. The other thing that you mentioned, and I know some of the others who were there as well, was a meeting in Germantown a while back about hydro fracking, and this meeting was, was basically one-sided. It was advertised as one-sided. There was supposed to be a follow-up meeting at some point, or maybe some of the industry people will look at it, but some of the stuff that I heard at that meeting, seems to me that that's not something that the people of Claremont would be happy to have in there. I know John Mason did a, I thought, a good job of reporting what was said there. I know Charlie told me there were some things in there that he said were not accurate, but that's what was said at the meeting.
Yeah, I, I know.
And there's been some discussion in the past as to whether or not, should there be an issue with Claremont because we don't have the Marcellus shale, but again, at this point, and I would like to hear from people in town, I'll tell you, I think I've talked to a few people, I think I'm going to visit the zoning board and planning board to try and get input back, but I think we should take a look at it, and see whether or not we think that it's something that we would like to see involved, see Claremont involved in or not. The problem that we have is that, as with other mining, the town cannot write zoning that regulates it, because it's regulated by DEC. According to the attorney that spoke there is that the town can ban hydro fracking for natural gas drilling, but if we don't, we can't regulate it, so we leave it to the DEC to regulate, and some of the ports have come in, I don't think that is the kind of thing that people in Claremont would like. And I base that on, you know, comments that have been made by some, and also things that went on in previous past years with, you know, gravel mining, and that looked more like good gravel mining, people were not too happy, so I suspect that people in Claremont would be. But I would like to hear from people, either myself or the other town board members, and, you know, I don't think it's something that we need to jump into this month or even the next month, but I think we should be looking at it. next month, but I think we should be looking at it.
Yeah, certainly from past practices, I agree with you, you know, if we have no control of regulations, the D E C is going to be the one regulating this, we cannot trust that to be our safeguard. I mean, that's certainly not something that I'm comfortable with, I'm sure most of the people in Claremont would realize and agree, that if we have no regulations over this, it's, it could be a big problem, you know, and I don't want to go up to the D E C, so that's, I agree with you.
Did you say that the D E C, that we can't regulate our zoning rather?
That we can't regulate anything to do with natural gas drilling, including hydro fracking.
But we can do it through the zoning.
You can ban it?
No, we can ban it completely.
Right, through the zoning.
But, but we cannot say, we will allow hydro fracking in Claremont, but we won't allow you to have a holding pond above larger than a certain size.
Okay.
Because we don't have that.
And isn't it a little precipitous to say, you know, to take a, you know, straw pole residents of Claremont without hearing both sides of the, the argument, so to speak? We only have one side of the argument so, so far, and we haven't heard the other side.
Yeah, we certainly have fog, we hear from the other side, we also do public meetings, hearings, you know, we certainly have a lot more than just, you know, saying, hey, five people don't like me.
Yeah, I just would like, if people have thoughts on it, I would be happy to listen to them and hear them.
Well, how can you have a thought if you haven't heard both sides, that's my point, you know?
Well, some people may have heard both sides in other areas. The meeting that we went to was the first of a series of meetings that will take place that involve three towns, basically Livingston, Claremont, and Germantown. The meeting was held in Germantown, and a number of town board members from Claremont were there as well as board members from the other towns. And the speakers talked about the problems.
I was there, yes.
Yeah.
There was a, a person at the meeting that actually was from Pennsylvania, remember? She said in the back, it was kind of interesting, she kind of gave us a little rundown of exactly what was going on.
She let the roads work, right?
Yeah, she wasn't, she wasn't. Well, they were, they were paid for very well.
I'm going to be curious to see what the D E C comes up with, because presumably we would hope that they look at what's going wrong in other states and come up with some better rules, and the other thing, I don't really completely trust them to get things right.
They didn't do a very good job with the lummy dump, you know, so that was the proof.
That probably is everything, obviously the D E C.
Yeah, yeah.
D E C has come up with tentative rules through the legislature in that state. I've got a copy of them coming for you people, again, through New York Farm Bureau. I had, I've been to Pennsylvania to mines, to where they were fracking, where they were drilling. You've got to see it to believe what they do, to tell you the truth. Like I said, I mean, there's a lot of printed information out there, I have, the craziest part is I had it all, and I threw it away. But I, I've asked for copies of as much of it as I can for everybody to read, you know, it'll be here when I get it. I think there's a lot to be said, I think, I agree, we've got to see both sides of the story, you know, it isn't a one-sided thing, it's a two-sided thing, and, and that, so as soon as I get the information, it will be here in the town hall, and D E C has proposed a whole new set of regulations, which, again, when you have lummy dumps and that, I realize everybody's afraid of D E C, but they're the ones that do control it.
They didn't do it with lummy dumps.
What?
They, they were supposed to enforce it, they, they did a good job, so.
Right, and do you think the, the material that they said they were going to give to the town supervisor?
I did not yet, no. The resident's been handed out, I did not get a copy of that, so.
I don't want to turn this into a fracking game, it's just a really quick update, but...
I was going to wait till you have it, just, let me just say one thing, I want to thank and commend the members of the board, because it wasn't just our supervisor that was there to represent this town, but almost every member of the board was there, and I was very impressed by that fact, that you all took an interest and, and paid attention to it, and, and yes, I think we should have the information for both sides. I'm also doing a lot of research online since I went there, so it, it was informative.
Sure, thank you.
We all need to do really is educate ourselves at this point.
Okay, do we have any else to move on? That's it, okay. Ed, you, anything yet?
Not too much, I mean, it's pretty quiet with the schools. Pine Clines has a goal-setting workshop on August 29th, so if people are interested in that, they can go there. I didn't see anything similar on either Germantown or Redwoods districts, but you can watch the website, see if something comes up.
All right, thank you. Nancy, you have a feeling on?
No, I haven't started updating the plan yet for the emergency plan, I think it's getting toward time now since we have to adopt it first of the year again. So if anybody has any ideas for things we need to include in it, or changes of people or more volunteers in any way, if they can let me know.
Okay, solution, thank you. Okay, moving on to old business, hydro fracking, I think we covered that, I'm just going to give an update, but we pretty much covered all that information. The bridge update, Ed, I can't remember if I had it before or after last meeting, I had several meetings at the bridge, Livingston Supervisor, the Department, head of the Department, Dave Robinson, Public Works at the bridge, we looked at this, I, you know, I expressed our concern again about reopening this bridge, I asked him to go back, have to examine what was there, to the abutments are in good shape, the outside steel members are in good shape, but basically the only thing on that bridge that needs replacement is the steel members that go across for what holds the decking and the decking. I have a very, very hard time swallowing it, that's $550,000. So I asked him to revisit this with the, the people that inspect this, John Howard, and come back to me and let me know what, you know, what exactly they're giving us a pause on, is it a whole new bridge or what? Because it just, it just seems like an awful lot of money, and I've talked to other people and other consultants, and they seem to agree with that, it seems to be that a lot. So I'm waiting to hear back, and with that information, I'll probably get it this month's meeting, and at the same time, we examined what we could do for a turnaround area, because obviously even if we do proceed to fix this bridge, it would be, next year's budget would be the end of next year before it was probably fixed. So I told him we could not continue to use, you know, to leave it like that, because on our side of the bridge, it's a problem, because, you know, the road comes down and it's just, it stops with lawns and driveways on both sides, there's no area to turn around on this, on this road. So what I asked him to do is come up with a solution, at least a short-term solution, and possibly a permanent solution, if we do get this covered. They, they looked at it, they assessed it, and they, they figured the best way to address this problem is to acquire a property on our side, away from the bridge, just a little bit on, on this side of Salsa's driveway, that's the last house there, across from Peak Fingers, acquire a property to make a hammerhead, what they call a hammerhead turnaround, where you could go out and back in and turn around and come out. And they were also wanting to do the same thing on the other side of the bridge, because, you know, there, there needs to be town or county-owned property to turn around, obviously we can't do it on private property. So I asked them to give me a price on what they thought this would cost, and I also asked for a price on what they determined would cost to take down the whole bridge, if it's going to be permanently closed, we're not going to let sit there for falls in the cliff. I wanted a price to remove it if it's going to be permanently closed. Between the, the two hammerheads and the removal, it was pushing $150,000, is the estimate they came back with. So I says, well, let's get the number button down, the replacement of this bridge, and figure out, if it's $150 to take it down, if it's maybe $300 or $400 to put it up, I mean, it makes sense to replace this bridge. I mean, if we're going to put that much money into taking it down and buying property, let's just fix the bridge. So that's where we are at that, I have had a lot of conversations with Livingston Supervisor McDonald, he's had more inquiries from his town as well about replacing it, so we are, we are still working on this, and I'm just, I just want to give everybody a brief update and let you know that I'll have more information for next meeting. But I did talk to the chairman of the board, and he said that he was going to come down here also and look at it with me, and determine maybe we put it in next year's budget, but it certainly wouldn't have it for next year's budget, so that's where we stand at this point with the update. Survey lock line adjustment, we finally have a map on this, the Salsa property next door that they donated the extra piece, right south of us here, we had, we hired a consultant to do an update on it, it's an updated map, he's finally got the map finalized, and it also shows the back triangle of the cemetery property, where we have access to the back property as well now. I'm just getting final signature, I have Salsa signed up on it, I have to have a cemetery sign off on it, and he's going to bring it to the planning board this Wednesday night to finalize the map, and then we'll go through the form procedure to actually acquire the property from the cemetery. But we do have the map, it is done, and we are proceeding with that, and, you know, we can't say enough to thank the Salsa, Andy that donated the property, and also the Cemetery Association for giving us the access that we need across there, so, both were donated, so, you know, I appreciate that, and I'm sure everybody here does. So we will get that by this, this month's planning board meeting, and hopefully by next month we'll have it all, but. Reunion's Way paving dedication, we just took care of that. Parked the ball field, the ball, basketball court, I just want to mention again that that is finished, there has been people using it already. Again, you know, thanks to Freeman Howard for the donation of the backboard, that certainly helped us out a lot, it was over a thousand, a little over $1,000 for that, the backboard imposed, and, you know, it was a nice donation on his part, on their part. Again, highway guys, you know, you almost have to thank the only people who do around here because they are, they are maintenance crew, they installed it, they put the specs at the right height, I mean, it looks good, that was over there, it's a very nice, very nice court. They did black topping with the help of Livingston, and made Germantown, I'm not sure if they're involved, but they, they all worked together, and they used the pavement, did a nice job over there. Can't say enough about the amount of work they do for us around here. And on that note, just to mention, I don't know if anybody has heard through the grapevine, but we have had a little setback with our paver that we, we own jointly with Livingston and Germantown. They were paving, I believe, Cul-de-sac in Germantown several weeks ago, and it caught fire. There was some damage done to it, burned up some of the wiring and stuff and some lines on it, they did put it through the insurance, which is insured with Livingston, and they are getting an estimate on it replaced now, obviously it's not a loss, a total loss, but it's going to need some work to fix it, so they do have, they do have that in works, so temporarily without the paver for the law, but at least our paving's done, so.
I think we have to wait.
Germantown's got to wait, so we're, we're in good shape, but it is being repaired, let's put it that way, so. Okay, moving on, revenues and budget, new business. Just to mention, everybody has a copy on the board of our deposits this past month. We received our second quarter sales tax check from the county, came in $77,654.69, surprisingly $3,000 more than last year, which is good, we, we budgeted our revenues off of anticipation of last year's revenue, so anything above or beyond what we budgeted is an increase to us and should help us out on our funnel sheet at the end of the year. Revenues continue to stay steady, a hair above what we had last year as far as the sales tax, which is, which is good news, I think somewhat probably because of the high gas prices are still hanging in there, maybe people are loosening up the spending a little more, but we are, we are in pretty good shape as far as the revenues go at this point, and with the mild winter we had last year, we should be hopefully overall in good shape at the end of the year, so we'll hope for a mild fall as well, so, but we are, we are in good shape at this point. Nymer update, just want to update everybody quick, Nymer is the insurance company that ensures the town, I met with David Bloodgood is his name, he's the agent that came down, he wanted to meet with me two weeks ago, we met here for about an hour and a half, he wanted to, he came down, took a walk through every building, I showed him what we had, he did take several notes, he is, he is going to get back to us with recommendations on improvements, minor things that he saw that he'd like to see done, he did, as a matter of fact, asked us about that building, his painting, I says, well, that's in the works, I says, don't worry, we have actually bids tonight to open on this. He asked about some signs, some exit signs that are needed, a few spots we don't have, he wanted another emergency lighting like we have here in the courtroom, he just made a bunch of notes, he's going to have a bunch of recommendations for us to consider, he said it probably take about a month or so to get into us. He did tour the highway garage, took a look at all the fire extinguishers, took a look at the weight ratings on the floors, he checked pretty much everything, you know, pretty thorough. So he is going, like I said, going to get a report back to us, what they consider risks and what we can improve, and then we'll have to consider, you know, if we're going to do them, what we can do, and, you know, how much we have budgeted, you know, if we can do it all or not. I don't think it's a lot of money items, but just a lot of minor upkeep, so, they like to do that, I believe that they're doing it with every town to represent, and this is the first time they've been around to us in a while, so, again, he'll get a report to us, and we should have it maybe by next meeting, he said about a month, so. Okay, insulation bid, I don't know if you remember, a few months ago, it was two months ago, it was, it was two months ago in June, we, we looked for a price, we went through NYSERD, we're looking to insulate the attic on the down wall, we went through NYSERD, we got a grant, we priced it out, we put a RFP out, we received bids, eight, nine thousand dollars to insulate the attic of this building, we considered that to be extremely high, we weren't going to go through with it, our grant was only for $3,000, wouldn't cover, you know, a third of it, we decided to scrap the idea of going through NYSERD for this, for this insulation project. So Ed actually contacted a builder that does insulation and got us the quote, we brought it up at two meetings, I believe, that, you know, he put a quote in to insulate, and specifies what he's going to use as far as fiberglass insulation, blown-in insulation in areas that you can't get in, the estimate came back $1,500, and we decided at that point, we thought we may have to read more bids on this, I spoke to Andy, it is under $3,000, it is at the board's discretion if we want to bid this out further. I've spoke to John Feizer, our building inspector, he's in the business, Ed's in the business, I'm in this business, I feel that this price is very, very reasonable, I don't see a reasonable offer for any other bids on this, and since we already have this bid public, it wouldn't be fair, you know, in my eyes, we'd actually bid it out at this point. So I'm presenting this report tonight to say that we approved this, we do have money in the building's line, so I'd like to put up the discussion and evoke to approve this $1,500 for insulation. It will save us money on heating in the long term, obviously every, every year we have no insulation, so everything we do heat just goes right out the ceiling and right out the roof, so it's probably a five-year payback, and it'll be paid for, so, and heating well. So if there's any other discussion with the board, or if they, you know, have a discussion in the board, or want to make a motion to approve?
Any motion, bro?
All in favor? Closed? Carry. Okay. Okay, church painting, let's see, that's the last, highway trucks, just a quick update, again, we did receive, Bob mentioned, we received, we found it in possession of our new truck, it looks very nice, they had a couple little bugs they had to work out, they went back up, they had a couple controls, I think they had to switch for minor, minor errors, but no, no real problems with it. We have it back now, it is lettered, it looks, looks really nice, you know, it's going to save us money as far as hauling, we've discussed this a lot, but I'll just mention again, this is a little bit bigger truck, which will save us when we go out to make our long runs out to Turkey Hill, where they can make it one truck instead of two now, so it's certainly going to help us maintain roads in a more close effective time, time of life. So I'm glad to see that we have it, and it did come in approximately $10,000 less than what we budgeted, so, you know, that's, that's a little, a little cushion to help us out there, but the total truck was around $220,000, so it's certainly a major purchase, but it's budgeted, and, you know, it's something we have to do, unfortunately, we don't like to spend that kind of money, but it's, it's in the best interest of the town and taxpayers to keep the equipment functioning, so. The one we took off the road is a 1983 that is, is very, very rough shape, the problem was it wouldn't pass inspection anymore. That has been to declare surplus equipment, we did that with, it was two months ago. Jimmy did, I believe, get the advertisement to Mary, we are advertising to open bids at our next meeting to sell that truck, is anybody interested if they'd like to bid on that? I'm not quite sure what for, if it won't pass inspection, but maybe parts, steel, but we do have an offer from, I believe, a steel junk dealer, which was fairly reasonable, and if anybody wants to bid on it, obviously for anything else, it's certainly out there for bid, we will open bids at the next meeting.